Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Independent School District 112 Regular Meeting of the School Board. Today's date is September 27th, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I commented on the last time. It's great to have that voice behind us during the pledge. Next order of agenda is to adopt the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Still moved? Second?
Moved by Anderson, seconded by Stone. Any additional comments on the agenda? All right, all those in favor of adopting, so go ahead and say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Perfect, we have an agenda. It's going to move us on to 2.0, which is the open forum. This is an important time for us to hear from community and thank everybody for coming out and taking the time to be able to talk or to address the school board and have any concerns or thoughts or things that you want to share with us. Just as a reminder, we do have a full docket tonight. We have 45 minutes dedicated to open forum. Each speaker has a three-minute limit. What will happen is 30 seconds into that, Sarah will give just a verbal, "We have 30 seconds left," and then the tone will go off. Out of respect for other speakers, because we do have a lot of speakers, and I want to get through as many as we possibly can, please be respectful of that. I will have to cut you off five or 10 seconds after the timer. Just, again, we want to get through multiple people, so please don't take that as rudeness. Really trying to just manage the schedule and get through that. And then when we get to the end of the 45 minutes, we'll then close open forum for this evening. I am hopeful that we can get through 15 names, and we have multiple alternatives that have been signed up for that. Just a couple of ground rules before we get started. One thing is, again, this is a great time to give feedback to the board. It's not a time for the board to have open dialogue. If you want follow-up or you want some comments and stuff like that, just let us know, and then we will follow up with each and every speaker, depending on what you would like from that. The other thing is, I know that we'll be talking about multiple subjects, that there's opinions on both sides. I just ask you to be respectful during that, to hold back applauses and other things, knowing that we have both sides present, and to be respectful of other individuals. So please help me with that as we move forward through that. The other thing is, is please don't, part of the rules is, don't use names or individual names or anything with that in a negative way. That's something that also we'd want to be respectful from that avenue associated with it. So with that, let's get started. First up is Samantha Fisher. Hi Samantha.
Push the button. There you go.
Okay, is that better?
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Fisher, and I have a six-year-old son who attends first grade in this district. I have worked in the medical device industry for over eight years now and have extensive experience in the areas of HIPAA medical device usage and the interpretation of raw data released by both government entities and the private sector. I know a lot of parents here are going to speak to the data, the moral aspects of empowering schools and staffs to abuse our children, and even some personal stories, but I would like to speak tonight on the legalities around the decision-making process that is taking place here. First, in regard to the use of a medical device, the FDA considers a face mask a Class II medical device. In fact, specifically, they say, "The FDA regulates face masks, including cloth face coverings, barrier face coverings, and surgical masks as medical devices when they are intended for a medical purpose. Medical purposes include uses related to helping prevent the spread of COVID-19. Legally, a Class II medical device comes with liability and consent. If the district intends to force the use of a medical device on children, they need to sign liability and consent forms each time that device is changed," which is every day. Second, there are numerous statutes in Minnesota state law that prohibit the use of masking children. For example, Minnesota statute 260E.03, subsection 18, classifies physical abuse on a child as, quote, "interference with a child's breathing." There is also Minnesota statute 609.735, "A person whose identity is concealed by the person in a public place by means of a robe, mask, or other disguise is guilty of a misdemeanor." As the statutes I listed read, you are forcing educators to commit felony physical child abuse while simultaneously exposing our children to a misdemeanor offense at the state level. Finally, I would like to reference your specific policies, as I know COVID-19 supposedly changes district by district and even from public to private schools. As parents, we have frequently been told that the superintendent is making the sole decision on COVID policy. According to your policy, number 202, the superintendent shall be an ex officio, non-voting member of the school board. Not only does this mean superintendent does not have the authority to make unilateral decisions regarding an action by the board, but respectfully does not even get a vote. Per your policy 201, a majority of voting members constitutes a quorum. The act of the majority of a quorum is the act of a school board. Therefore, the members of the board need to vote on any and all decisions. I would like to leave you with this. Your personalized learning plan states that our young learners get learner voice and choice, meaning that, and I quote, "Students have the freedom to design the way they showcase their learning. Respected as capable co-designers, learning agency is cultivated through all learning experiences. As learners become increasingly self-aware, they grow into their own best advocates, showcasing their learning based on their individual styles, experiences, needs, and knowing what's next for their ongoing development. We move to this district to be in a supportive environment that cultivated leadership development and practice advocating for oneself. I implore you to consider your stance on education when making your decisions, consider the voice of every learner based on their needs and experiences, and be an example of sound leadership in this state. You have the ability to arm our children with a voice. Please discontinue your tyrannical use of power to stifle that."
Thank you. Thank you Samantha. Next Patricia Williamson. Hi Patricia.
Hello, good evening, school board. So I would just like to introduce myself again, Patricia Williamson. I'm a PhD-trained scientist in nutritional biochemistry and regulatory affairs, and I have my daughter Isabel with me. She is a middle-school-aged child. I'm going to start tonight with talking through some of the, with my limited time to walk through our District 112 data dashboard, some Carver County data, and talk about the decision-making to mask our kids at all, much less the upping of it this week. Ask some questions which go unanswered by this body and the superintendent. So in decision-making, the levels in this chart correspond to the same data we used last year. It says right here, "The levels in this chart correspond to the same data." Why have we not progressed? This is equal to calling the fire department if someone lights a match, rather than just simply blowing it out or dumping it into water. I did not understand how we would set such a low bar without consideration of what we now know. What do we now know? Well, I'm going to go through the dashboard from the school district. Less than 1% of the current cases in this district are under quarantine, less than 1% of student and staff. The case numbers that are presented on the district website, right now, I've got two different data tables that have been published up on this site. Why is it that this report is such imprecise in the data with these less than five numbers per different buildings? Why not list them as zero or the actual numbers? Why not also indicate staff separate from students? This representation actually makes the numbers very difficult to track and not very transparent to follow. Also, what is these summer programs that are taking up 37 slots in this data? Right now, that is nearly half from last week and more than that. So why? Where is this coming from? And why is the district's COVID numbers tracking not being used in this process? We can see that there, in the past two weeks, there's been a little bit of a progression, but not much in this district. Also, I'd like to understand why these two graphs from week to week have changed numbers for a variety of different windows and time. Beyond that, what is a case? Where is the testing coming from? Should CCS be using case numbers which come from a variety of testing purposes to make decisions for our schools, for a variety of public people? Well, we know over the course of the pandemic, about 11.6% of people in this county have been exposed to and/or have some sort of a test positive. But we've had 53 deaths in the course of over 18 months.
30 seconds.
And of those deaths, none of them have been on people under 50. But yet, you guys think masking is somehow needed. I'm sorry for the 50 people that died, but not our kids. What about residents? Hospitalization? We have some of the lowest numbers. Now we're under 2% for hospitalization. Not to mention the data delays in the reporting data, that there are some that have been up to 45 days before the sample is taken. And we don't have very many numbers of people that are having this problem, but we do have a high vaccination rate in this county. So why do we still have to put ineffective masks? And if you look by age breakdown, the most vulnerable are vaccinated in this community. So why are we doing this?
Todd Parmenter. Sorry Todd. Hi Todd.
Todd Parmenter, resident of Chaska. This is our 15th year with at least one child in District 112. I want to talk a little bit about trust. Thinking back to the referendum of 2019, only one of three ballot items passed, and that was about trust. There were negative reports about the newly hired equity team. After doing my own research, I concluded there was controversy and danger in their approach to equity. My fears were eventually confirmed. Poor communication and delivery, stealthy and inappropriate survey questions for kids, controversial and often not age-appropriate. CRT training sessions held for teachers and administrators. While recognizing our own personal biases can be enlightening, attendees have been brought to tears of shame. Others have been berated for asking questions in those sessions. This happened over and over in our district schools. My hope is that the new equity team can do better. We need to build each other up, not tear each other down. Doesn't unity sound better than division and segregation? It's about trust. Fast forward to COVID-19. Federal, state, and local administrations and agencies continue mandates and restrictions. Data is lacking or misrepresented. Studies are mostly non-credible for various reasons, considering conflict of interest and who funds the sample size and other factors. Leadership and media messaging is inconsistent and divisive. Statistics presented don't adequately address causation and effectiveness of mitigation protocol, mostly just trend graphs around case counts. It's about trust. Considering the negative physical and mental health outcomes from wearing masks, a mask choice option seems more appropriate. Implementing simpler, common-sense approaches would be better. Social distancing, if you don't feel well, stay home. I feel this response to people that share my view on masking has been lacking substance and qualitative data to support the plan. The mitigation roadmap is clear to me, but the science behind it seems to be absent. It's about trust. As parents, our trust in public schooling is eroded even more. In the last referendum, I had to be persuaded to vote yes. Based on what I've seen from the district since then, I'm compelled to vote no. It's about trust. Assuming the district requires masks at some point this week, we'll likely pull our son out of public school.
30 seconds.
We feel pretty comfortable with his current teachers, and he's made new friends this year, which makes the decision completely heartbreaking. I feel for the masked teachers that struggle to breathe every day. We could see and hear them struggling in just little 10-minute chunks on curriculum night. At the end of the day, my son doesn't want to wear a mask. As parents, we don't want him to wear a mask. It's in his best interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next John Arsenault. Hi John.
My name is John Arsenault. My wife Jody and I live in Carver. We have two kids in the district. There are a lot of us here who distrust our government, the FDA, the CDC, the pharmaceutical, and our health agencies. The reason is simple. Their history is littered with atrocities and cover-ups. Here are a few examples. 1914, the year opioid-based drugs were regulated due to their addictive and dangerous nature. 2.6 million, the number of people in the U.S. estimated to be addicted to opioids, thanks to our health services prescribing them like candy, in spite of the fact that they were well aware of the crisis they were creating. 577, the number of days multiple government agencies withheld information about the lead leaching into water supplies in Flint, Michigan. 1957, the year Johnson &amp; Johnson was aware their baby powder contained traces of asbestos. 11,700, the number of plaintiffs who filed suit against Johnson &amp; Johnson for cancers linked to the asbestos in their baby powder. Now unfortunately, I've barely scratched the surface. The list of atrocities, lies, scandals, and cover-ups committed by these corrupt agencies, who are here to protect us, is exhaustive. Oh, but don't worry, I'm sure they have our best interest at heart this time. I'm sure they're telling us the truth about COVID. Want another fact? 5.5 trillion and growing. This is the amount of wealth transferred from the poorest to the richest, making COVID the single largest transfer of health or wealth in all of human history, bar none. The recipients of this wealth are the ones in control of the narrative. They're the ones controlling the media and the news and the data we have access to. They're the ones giving this constant bombardment of fear porn. What do most of these atrocities have in common? We have corporate greed and power craving elites who have legions of subordinates carrying out their dirty work. These agencies have proven time and time and time again that they do not have our best interest at heart. We need to work together as a community. We need to find the balance for what's best for our kids. Now, the irony in all of this is that those of us that are calling bullshit on the masks, the lockdowns, and the mandates, we are the ones that are being treated like crazy tinfoil hat-wearing conspiracy theorists.
30 seconds.
Now, I'll leave you with this. History has not been kind to the subordinates who helped perform and support these atrocities. The elites have the money to get away with this. It's the subordinates who get the punishment. To our board members, please stop being a subordinate. Stop supporting these elites who are using this virus to increase their power and wealth. Be part of the solution. Find the courage to challenge the narrative. Being fed to you, be on the right side of history. Stop the mask mandates and allow our parents to choose what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you John. Samantha Williamson Hughes. Hi Samantha.
I'm Samantha Hughes. I'm a senior at the Integrated Arts Academy. And yes, I'm here to be that person. I know that my opinion may not be as valued. I'm just a kid. I'm not intimidating like these parents are. But I believe that as a student, my opinion should be valued, as I am experiencing this firsthand. And what I have experienced is absolutely distasteful. I transferred schools here from a school in rural Missouri. No masks, no social distancing, and, would you believe it, a minimal amount of quarantining end cases. As someone who already struggles to breathe from just walking, and a person with anxiety, adding face coverings on top of that just makes it a struggle for me to simply function. This is my last year of high school. I'd like to spend it free of mandates and restrictions. I'd like a normal senior year. Speaking of normal, let's talk about how masks affect students. For one, humans tend to rely on facial expressions and lip reading to communicate. You can see how masks can interfere with this. My little sister has definitely had a difficult time with this. I also can't begin to imagine how hard it must be for our friends who are hard of hearing. I don't know about you, but I find that repeating myself gets really tiring. Masking should be optional, not a requirement. When I can't see my friends smile or hear their jokes, you know we're doing something wrong here. Give me a normal year and let me be a kid.
Thank you Samantha. It's always helpful to get a student perspective, so thanks for coming out. Svetlana? I apologize, I can't do your last name.
That's okay.
Welcome.
Yeah, hi. You know, I don't have to tell you where I'm from. You already know by my name. Yeah, and I can tell you all about it. I didn't grow up in this country. You know, I came here about when I was 22-years-old, looking for American dream and freedom. Freedom to make decisions which are good for myself and my family. I got started here late in this fight, came here at the last board meeting. Never in my whole life did I think I would be standing here in the United States, land of the free, defending mine and my son's rights for freedom to choose, from being physically and mentally abused by the board and superintendent in the name of health. I'm not here to represent Republican or Democratic Party. I'm not here to represent anti-maskers or anti-vaxxers. We are way past that. My side is anti-mandate, pro-freedom, pro-liberty, and pro-Constitution of Minnesota and the United States of America. And your side feels like it's okay to take your worldviews and force it on everybody else, regardless of what they want for them and their children. And all of the history has, there has never been a time when a side trying to force their way of life on another side through use of mandates has been good, guys. And I can tell you all about it. I was raised in Soviet Union. But yet, exactly what you're advocating for. Your actions are tyrannical, with the true definition of that word. This is a dictatorship, and trust me, I have seen it before. I've lived through it. This is why I left Soviet Union. Forcing me to take the steps to mitigate your fears and anti-American, and it's against our way of life and Constitution. You are going down the wrong path. And I didn't come to this country so you can drag me back, so what, drag me back to what I have left. So we try to convince you guys using facts, using data, using logical arguments. Your decisions were made before you even got here. Over the last month, it became obvious to me, obvious to me, so you're like so many other elected positions, just another political body. You don't care about data, science, or actual risk for our children, or damages been done to them. All in the center of your fears and money. All you care is about your political power and making sure your worldviews are being carried out regardless of consequences for society and children. The mask compliance was 100% last fall, and the numbers still went up. Why do you continue doing the same thing expecting different results?
30 seconds.
This is insanity, and this is fear. If that's how you make your decisions, then you're not qualified to be on the school board or leading the school district for that matter. You simply don't belong here. And you're here to represent us, the parents, the people, nobody else. You work for us. You may sit in those seats for now, voting to restrict our rights and freedoms, but there will be a day, not in the distant future, when you are citizens like us, begging for your freedoms and rights that you so easily tossed away, because you will not have them either.
Thank you.
And you messed up by deciding to wake up the sleeping masses and targeting our children. We will not quit. We will not stop, and we will not go away. We will use every legal option to get you all out, and you will not get the bonus on November 2nd. That's how it works. Make the right decision.
Thank you.
And enjoy it. Otherwise, you're taking your last breath on this bench.
Thank you. I do want to make, I do want to hear from lots of people, so just help me when that buzzer goes off to try to wrap it up. I'm given like five seconds or so. That really allows me to get through 15. Shannon Schlecker. Hi Shannon.
Hi. Hello, my name is Shannon Schlecker. I live in Victoria. I have two boys at Chan Hessen High School. We send our kids to your schools, trusting that you will have their best interests at heart. But you don't. The announcement today is disappointing. You mask kids in the name of science, but you clearly don't understand science. Your data and science aren't even that. At Chan High School, there's 1,636 kids of what eight kids have tested positive. That's .0048%. And can you prove that those cases came from school? You can't, because COVID doesn't exist at Target or any professional sports, right? So let's talk about the safe learning plan. The definition of discrimination, according to Merriam-Webster, is the practice of unfairly treating a person or group of people differently from other people or groups of people. Equity, you guys know about equity. Equity is defined as fairness or justice in the way people are treated. According to Eastern Carver County Schools' website, Eastern Carver County Schools are committed to creating a school environment where everyone, it says "everyone," feels welcome, safe, and included. Equity is foundational to personalized learning and necessary for strong communities. So under the district's safe learning plan, quarantining must take place because of the following. Testing positive or a household member tests positive, you need to quarantine for 10 days. If you are identified as a close contact, please, you must quarantine for 10 days or provide a negative test after seven days. If you have no symptoms, you can wear a mask for the 10 days. If you are fully vaccinated, or you have had COVID in the last 90 days, doesn't matter if you have an immune system and you still have, right, then you don't have to quarantine, fully vaccinated, okay? So this is conditioning people, including the kids in your district, to believe that the vaxxed people are the good guys, right? You're indoctrinating them to this belief. Kids are calling out other kids if they're not vaxxed. It's happening in the schools. Parents are talking about it, okay? So what were the definitions of discrimination and equity, right? So based on the safe learning plan, District 112 discriminates. Let's talk about this vaccine. There's so much I could say, like how they switched the name to comirnaty, and the FDA literally fooled everyone and said it was approved, but that's beside the point. There are over 200 million Americans that are fully vaccinated. Daily cases now are 300% higher than they were a year ago, when there were zero vaccinations. 300%. Why is that? Let's listen to the CDC Director, Rochelle Walensky, tell Wolf Blitzer on CNN from August this year.
Our vaccines are working exceptionally well. They continue to work well for Delta with regard to severe illness and death. They prevent it. But what they can't do anymore is prevent transmission.
Did you hear that? What they can't do anymore is prevent transmission. So why are we, why are we listening to this as part of our safe learning plan? Oh, because you're trying to get everyone to believe that the vaccinated people are the good guys. An August 2021 paper in The Lancet by Oxford University Clinical Research Group found that vaccinated individuals carry 251 times the load of COVID-19 viruses in their nostrils compared to the unvaccinated. And the mutations are coming from vaccinated people. So sorry, vaccinated people, you're the freaking super-spreaders, right? In closing, stop propagating the outright lie that being vaccinated makes you a hero. It's not, it does not make you a hero. Walking around with 251 times the amount of viral load in your nostrils, yuck. Stop segregate, stop segregating the vaxxed versus the unvaxxed. Practice equity, which according to your district website is very important to you. Stop the madness. Listen to us parents who have every right to parent our kids. You do not.
Next is Kelly King. Hi Kelly.
Hi, my name is Kelly King. We have three children. I have my master's degree in education and taught elementary school for 12-plus years. Our children have had many wonderful experiences, teachers, principals, over the years. So I'm saddened to have to share the unfortunate story of why after 10 years in the district, we were forced to pull our children last fall. We have a son with epilepsy. He has had over 40 grand mal seizures. These are the kind of seizures that come without warning. He loses consciousness, drops to the ground, shakes uncontrollably, till rescued with a medication. His breathing is affected. It's terrifying to witness, and it takes 20 minutes to get him back. Last fall, he had a mask exemption from his neurologist for any activity, because he's had hyperventilation seizures noted on EEG. In choir, he was forced to sing with a mask on. He noted to us that he felt lightheaded and couldn't catch his breath during choir. I was furious. I called. We went back and forth. The only option that was given to our epileptic son was that he could go to a private practice room, away from his class, and zoom into choir when he was in the building. This is discrimination? It is segregation? And the worst part is that is that it was a huge safety issue. Your accommodation of putting him in a room by himself when he could have a seizure? Huge safety issue. Keep in mind, this same child had a grand mal seizure the previous school year, and you had to lock down the entire middle school for him. We talked to our son. He said he would have felt extremely embarrassed to have to zoom in from another room and did not want to have to explain that to his friends. Is this the individualized learning that you are so proud of? Is this the equity and inclusion that you speak of? You canceled our son's right to be in class due to his medical condition. We could have hired a lawyer and fought the district on this. However, we made the very easy decision to move him to private school, and I should be thanking you guys, because it's been a huge blessing. He was discriminated against, and the district chose to override doctors' orders for a significant medical condition. I implore you that, at the very least, stop denying mask exemptions from medical professionals. We are currently at a private school that uses District 112 nursing. Masks are currently optional. We have another child with a mask exemption from a medical doctor, and we were told we would have to fill out an entirely different document with detailed private medical information, and then school administrators would decide if it's good enough. Our children's medical information is between us and their doctors. That's what we hired them for. We shouldn't have to jump through hoops or prove anything to you. I'm asking that this additional form be removed immediately, and that you take the mask exemption letters and treat them as gold, as you have done with all previous doctors' notes in the past. the past. This should be no different. I'm asking you, stop playing doctor to our children.
Next Laura Root.
My name is Laura Root. Thank you for giving me some time tonight. I come to talk about the mandated reporter statues. I've been a mandated reporter in the Carver County District for over 15 years. Several parents gave references to some of our statues that have been violated by COVID policies and procedures. You're mandated reporters, our coaches, teachers, counselors, childcare providers, anyone that's providing care and programming while outside of legal guardian care. Our statues are our framework to ensure that children are safe when they are not surrounded by their guardians. I invite you to read and become educated on the statues and everyone in your buildings are held to these. They're not being addressed. I've reached out to many places to try to find what we can do when policies and procedures violate our ability to keep children safe. The one parent that was just up, it's irresponsible that a teacher that is supposed to be a mandated reporter and understand these statues would have a child that has a significant medical problem and put them in a room by themselves. That is neglect. That is a derelict of your duty, you should understand. As mandated reporters, we need to stand up and we need to voice when these policies are not working. I myself have these affect many places that I am working in the community and not even in the schools. I stepped down from two positions because I could not ensure the safety of children when I was taking care for them. I stepped down from a coaching position and also a committee position. I could not see the children if they were expressing any issues. I know that several children had injuries and other negative effects as they were doing sports. So whatever the schools and the districts are setting, it runs through the communities. We see this in all of our youth programming. We're seeing it in any kind of programming that's offered and we need to be responsible. We need to first understand that if we cannot keep the full encompassed safety of these children, that we need to consider if we are offering something that we can deliver on. And so I want to just say that the mental injury, neglect, and physical abuse statutes all come into play when we're trying to do these policies together. So for neglect, if we are causing emotional harm in a pattern of behavior that contributes a child to being impaired or demonstrating that it is affecting the child's emotional cognitive responses, that is something we need to take into consideration. If we are doing unreasonable physical confinement or restraint for children, we need to take this into consideration. If we are unreasonably interfering with their breathing, such as if a child puts a mask on because they cannot breathe and they are reprimanded to put it up without any kind of acknowledgement, we need to take consideration into what we are doing. We are adults. Thank you.
Thank you Laura. Up next is Danielle Gobretson. Hi Danielle.
Hi. Good to see you again.
Thanks. Good to see you too. Thanks for letting me speak. I actually, again, had to change up my, my speaking tonight because about an hour before I came here, I got the phone call from the IAA nurse who proceeded to tell me that my daughter had a close exposure to a COVID positive person in the building and explained to me at that point that because she isn't vaccinated and she had COVID April 18th and it wasn't in the last 90 days, she does have to quarantine. Meanwhile, she did tell me that vaccinated students and those who've had COVID in the last 90 days are welcome to stay in school. And I'm just going to say right now that this, you guys are violating our constitutional rights. Our children have them, we have them. They are inalienable. They are God-given law of the land that you do not get to stomp all over because of a pandemic or anything else for that matter. It does not matter. They trump every statute that's man-made, that's open for interpretation. I don't, you, you guys are the ones that are bound to these statutes that are put in place to protect us and you're not standing by them. You don't have the right to force a medical device on my child or on her, on my child's person that affects her physical and mental health. I'm so disappointed in the segregation. I, I can't even, I don't want to start swearing, so I'm just going to say that this is no different than segregating black and white people. This is exactly Jim Crow laws. Don't forget the predecessors of those laws. Were created by democratic, white elected men like Joe Biden, who everybody seems to be modeling their, their deciding factors on what he says. He lies. He lies to us. And I'm, I'm, I think it's important that you would even think about segregating our kids and causing that kind of, it's virtue signaling that is for the common good, for community health. What did community health, when did it ever become more important than personal, individual, God-given rights? I'm sorry, it isn't. It never will be. And you know, the last time we saw this history in Nazi Germany, there were Nuremberg trials after, after the fact. And those who chose to side on that side of history didn't get to say, I was just following orders. They didn't get a pass. They were held accountable, some of them to death. Everything is, everyone is failing us right now. We don't trust you. We want to be able to trust you. Take the masks off our kids and stop segregating our children. In schools, my daughter's rights were just violated because she has to stay home now for 10 days. You're violating the right for her education in a public school. It's just not going to stand, so.
Thank you. Hi Andy.
Hi. Hi everyone. My name is Andy Bochamp. I'm a third grade teacher at Carver Elementary and this is my third year teaching in Eastern Carver County Schools. I wanted to come and talk today about some really great things that are happening in our building as we wrap up our first month of school. The most amazing part to any school year is the rekindling and the creating new relationships within our school community. And after the difficult years of COVID, relationships seem that much more special. Building relationships has been the number one focus for many as we enter a new year and one that has me feeling closer than ever to my colleagues, students, and their families. I've already had a student ask to be in my wedding one day, if that gives you an idea of how close we've gotten in the last few weeks. Our kids appreciate now more than ever the opportunity to come to school and see their friends and teachers and learn through engaging collaborative activities. Students are eating together in the cafeteria again, working in partners in small groups, reading and playing math games together, and all of those things are just a few examples of this year feeling like school again. Teachers are spending more time on social emotional learning and integrating life skills like gratitude into daily practice. We're singing and dancing and happy. This year, like any year, won't come without its challenges, but there's a refreshing energy and a growing positivity that is emerging to unite us through it. So far this year in our building specifically, we've been able to connect with our community by walking in the Carver Steamboat Parade and with the return of PTO events. We kicked off the year with a new Read-A-Thon fundraiser and got students excited about reading, which has raised over $40,000 for our building in three weeks, which is amazing. We've had staff social events after school and our admin has found amazing ways for us to connect with other teachers in our building. The connections we make with each other and our students are the fuel to the engine that keeps us going on this journey. Our kids are happy to be at school. There's an excitement and refreshing energy in the air and it's been a terrific start to the school year. Thank you.
Thank you Andy. Yanis Schomburg. Hi Yanis.
I didn't really, I didn't think of speaking about the mask issue, but I thought I do. When I had signed up to speak tonight, I post, or I mean, I saw your updated policy. I posted Facebook poll in a large Chaska Facebook group about whether or not people supported you, your decision or not. And 70% supports your decision to keep our students safe. So I wanted to share with you that the community that you see in the room might not be representative of the community that we serve. And just, just from the bottom of my heart, I wanted to express the gratitude to you being in the position of taking hard decisions that we, everyone, I think even, even people in the room here, we want our kids to be in school and what you are doing are helping our kids be in school. Last year, we had times where kids couldn't be in school and I know everyone doesn't agree with what we're doing, but anyway, I just want to share that I am very thankful for the community service you provide and I'm thankful for you making hard choices and making hard decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yanis.
What you just did is lied to the board.
Hey, hey, hey. You guys.
You better alert yourself.
You gotta go.
You guys, let's, let's continue to try to be respectful. We're all parents, we have kids. It's just, it's, it's really helpful from that aspect.
Remember, our children are watching.
And I do want to get through all 15, so please help us with that. Next is Eugene Borden. Borden?
Good evening. My name is Eugene Borden and I'm actually terrified in speaking in public, so I'm going to make it short and compensate for some longer speeches. I am like many others here against mask mandates. Please feel free to wear them if you wish, but it should not be mandated. We already pulled one child out of school because of that and we're hoping to keep the other one in school. It is overwhelmingly proven that masks do not really work. Kids do not find them needed or of course, some do because they have a pretty face on them, but we're sure of it. I did do a little bit of polling tonight as well and apparently 100% of my neighborhood does not support mask mandate. What do you know? Of course, it's a small sample, but it's, it's growing all across Minnesota, all across the United States. So like I said, I'm not a public speaker and it's the first time I went to the board, but I felt like we needed to get our voice out. Thank you.
Thank you Eugene. Next we have Dante Hughes. Hi Dante.
How's it going? So first of all, I'd like to apologize to you of what you're saying here tonight. This, this, this isn't community. It's selfish. When we can constantly say, our kids, our kids, and you're sitting there and nobody thinks about you at all, how you feel, if you're comfortable, if you feel safe, if you don't, we're worried about our own kids and what we think. They're not experts. Neither is nobody in this room. We don't know what works, what doesn't work. We're trying to get through it and we should be trying to get to it, through it together, but we're not. We're letting what we think and what we feel drive what we want everyone else to do. And that's not right and that's what you should see. That's not what you should see. And you shouldn't see another man attacking another man because of how he feels. It's not right. It's literally not right. So I apologize to you for that. When we say community, it's everybody. It's not one thought, it's not one feeling. We think, we're supposed to think and feel for everyone. Somebody brought up a number that 53 kids had died. Like that was a justification. Okay, 53 people had died. That's not a justification. Because that's 53 families who don't have a family member. And what they're not thinking about is every staff member, every teacher, and everybody else that's in the building. They're thinking about their child. That's not how it works. That is not how it works. My kids truly ran track, work, school, and mask, they didn't have problems. I'm not saying that other kids don't because that's not my, that's not my experience. I don't know. But I won't drive that my kids are healthy and haven't gotten anything on anyone else because that's just my family. That's not how we should do. I wear a mask and I'm vaccinated, but it's because I don't know. And that's how it should be because I don't know. You know one thing that we do teach that we are saying? We simply don't care. When we could just say, I don't know if I'll get COVID, I don't know if my kid will get COVID, I don't know if I'll die from COVID, I don't know if my kid will die from COVID. It's wrong. It's wrong.
Hey, can we let him speak, please?
And there's not, anyone in this community that say I haven't tried to talk or work through anything with anyone in the community. I'm all about community, but it's working together. It's not my, what I think enforcing it on you. You guys don't know, you, you're doing what may work, but you also have to think about every kid, every staff member, every teacher, and that's what the community is not doing.
Thank you Dante. Our last speaker of the night will be Reese Gorni.
Hi, my name is Reese Gorni. I'm an 11th grader at Chaska High School and I have two siblings in the district currently. And I'm here today to speak about mask mandates. I support everyone's decision to wear a mask, but I do not believe they should be required for all students. I, like many of my peers, have suffered from anxiety in the past and I also have low blood pressure, which makes it more difficult for me to wear a mask. I have fainted in the past and I do not believe it would be safe for me to wear it for a six-hour day at school, especially with minimal breaks. My siblings have felt the same way and I'm sorry, I'm a bit nervous.
Take your time.
Many good points have been made here today. I think the most important point is that everybody has the right to choose for themselves. We are focusing on our children and by doing that, we are able to do what is best for the community and for them as well. I am going to read some excerpts from my school yearbook last year. They did a poll. If COVID were to disappear today, the first or favorite thing I would do is burn most of the masks in the house, walk into the mall mask-free. I would not wear a mask because they are so annoying. Walk anywhere without a mask so I can breathe normally. I would go on vacation and enjoy the sun without a mask. These are the students who you represent and I thank you. You've done a very good job throughout much of my education and I truly believe I have had a wonderful education, especially compared to many other places in the United States and in the world. But I do not think that enforcing masks on every student is best for any student, especially since asymptomatic spread from student to teacher is virtually non-existent, especially in the United States of America. It does not happen. Healthy students cannot transmit to other students or to teachers whether or not they are wearing a mask. We do not need preventative measures for a risk that does not exist. I ask that you will please respect our decision to choose what we like for ourselves. Thank you very much.
Hey, hey, hey. Whoa, 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 guys, come on, come on. Officers, officers, please come to the room.
Officers.
Just leave the picture.
Leave the picture.
Leave the picture.
Who took the picture?
I think Jonas took it.
Yeah, you should not get, I will give it to the audience, right?
Yep, I will give it to the opposite.
Oh.
While we have kids in the league, that's the last thing that we need is violence. So if everyone stays calm down and acts adult.
I know emotions are high on this. It's helpful to get your perspective. We will follow up with those individuals, but please, I just, I again say civility. We will follow up with those individuals, but please, I just, I again say civility. For all those who are watching, for all those who are here, we are one community. Let's talk, let's, let's have that conversation, but let's not resort to violence and let it get to that level, please. He's talking to him out in the hall right now. The law enforcement is out there.
Law enforcement is here. He's the authority. Can we trust our law enforcement, please? I think our law enforcement is just, let's please trust them to do their job. Okay?
Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to 2.2, starting with the communications from student representatives. Joslyn?
All right. Hi, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Josie Fulmit. I'm an 11th grader at Chan and this is my first time sitting here tonight. So I hope the start of the school year is treating you all well. Today, I'll start with activities and athletics. So the Varsity, Chan-Huston Varsity Football Team did win against Orano last week. And the student section was full of red, white, and blues. It was very fun. I'm sure you also heard about the Chan v. Chaska game, which Chaska won. Our Powderpuff Games were also last week, which was run through DECA and there was a freshman and a senior win. As for activities, I'm sure the clubs and groups are excited to be together again. The Student Council put in a lot of effort into homecoming this week and it definitely paid off. The decorations were beautiful while they lasted. And I do feel obligated to tell you that the Chan musical is chitty-chitty-bang-bang and has started and is in full swing. Moving on to academics, I'm sure you're all aware of how hectic it is to be back and fully in person, but we've got nearly a whole month under our belt and I can say on behalf of many people that it is so great to be seeing classmates and teachers in person. Having that in-person connection is so important to me and many others. And I know we came into this school year hoping for a new normal, but although there are still so many uncertainties, at least we can be together. We have learned a lot of new things from the past two years along the lines of new ways to teach and technology, but I think the most important is having a renewed appreciation for learning in person. Thank you for your attention and respect.
Thanks, Joslyn. Do you know when's the musical going to be?
Our opening date is November 5th.
November 5th?
And I hear you're playing a very important part in that.
I am.
We're excited. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What part do you have?
I'm Jemima, which is the kid.
Oh, cool. Congratulations.
Who's the kid snatcher?
Um, what was that?
Who's the kid snatcher?
Oh, if you know, Nan Ryan.
Okay.
Yep, they're playing the kid catcher.
Any other questions?
Nope, I think that's it.
All right. Next, we're going to move on to communications from superintendent. Superintendent Sales Adams?